Meeting for the city of Nisswa on Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five at five thirty P M. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the Nisswa Downtown Master Plan. In December of two thousand and twenty four, the council voted to postpone discussions and decisions on the master plan to allow the Nisswa Chamber of Commerce to review the project and provide input and to ensure the newly seated council could weigh in. So tonight's agenda includes hearing from the chamber and the business owners and property owners, hearing from the council, and then finding alignment on a path forward as it relates to the scope, budget, and the project. So to get things started, Callie, we can turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. So we gathered a handful of downtown business owners and downtown property owners to discuss the downtown master plan project and come to a consensus on what everyone would like to see addressed in this project. So as everyone received what I sent you, right Jenny? Okay, so I'm just gonna kind of go through what I provided and add a little more context. And you can just stop me if you have any questions. So obviously, the number one concern is always parking. How can we add parking? Because, I mean, aside from building another level on top of Nisswa for parking, that's gonna be a challenge. So can additional land be acquired for parking or could current land be better utilized? Could we have paid a park lot? So perhaps the city purchases land, makes it a parking lot, and you pay to park like you would in Canal Park in Duluth, for example. Street parking would always remain free. Sidewalks. Update the sidewalks to be ADA compliant. I know the city recently did a study on ADA compliance, so I think the groundwork's already there on that one. Expand sidewalks, so we have them throughout the downtown central business district, including Nisswa Avenue, which would go down to Lake Latitude. City Hall Street doesn't have a continuous sidewalk. Lakers Lane, Church Street, perhaps a sidewalk down to the hardware store or the Legion, just to make everything a little safer for pedestrians. And then when it comes to updating the sidewalks, only updating sidewalks that are necessary to update. If a sidewalk is in good shape and ADA compliant, leave it alone to reduce the costs. Working on these items together, so ramps are located with accessible parking spaces and things like that is important. Currently, we don't have a lot of ramps, and the ones we do have are not located near the accessible parking spaces. So we would like to see that improved. Pedestrian safety, have dedicated crosswalks. I know this has been a hot button issue, but we think that this would improve pedestrian safety. It would minimize area of crossing, which would ease the flow of traffic. I mean, if you've driven downtown in the summertime, you know you're constantly stopping for people who are crossing the street willy-nilly. At these crosswalks, potentially having crossing safety signs with flashing lights, you know, just the pedestrian sign with a flashing light, just to bring awareness and draw attention to those for the drivers. And adding directional signage, this was talked about as a part of the parks master plan, I believe. And then we've had chamber members ask about it as well. So working together with the chamber, the city, and the businesses to come up with a plan for aesthetically pleasing signage that will accomplish what the businesses are looking to accomplish, what the city's looking to accomplish, and not clutter our corners with multiple different directional signage structures. All right. Then when it comes to beautification, keeping it simple. We had a member on our committee who previously owned a business in another town who did a big beautification project, planted trees outside. The trees, the base of the trees have become a collection point for garbage, cigarette butts. The leaves fall, they blow into the stores, so we don't want to see anything get too carried away. But adding some low maintenance landscaping, spots like the corner by the donut stand that are just kind of sad looking. Just sprucing those up a little bit, utilizing the Nisswa Garden Club to help, whether it's planting or keep up with those things. A large Nisswa Highway sign. We have no sign directing people that downtown Nisswa is here. When you pull into town on County Road eighteen, there's the nice welcome to Nisswa sign. But we would like to see something on the highway, perhaps at the corner of eighteen and three seventy one. Just a nice welcome to Nisswa sign. I did provide Jenny with some examples of kind of what we were thinking if anyone wants to see those. And tying projects together whenever it's possible. For example, if a road's being torn up to be redone, take care of the road, take care of the drainage, take care of the sidewalks. I know that seems like a no-brainer, but I don't think that's always done. And overall, we'd like to see it kept simple. Our businesses have a small window of time where they make the majority of their money in a year. We can't afford to have Main Street torn up during high season, make visitors navigate a construction zone, et cetera. So going back to the sign, these are just examples of some signs. I put the Las Vegas sign on there not because we want a Nisswa Las Vegas sign, but it's one of those signs where you see it, you don't even have to see the words, you know where that is. So just to create, help create awareness that downtown Nisswa is here because when you pass the Nisswa City Limits sign, you're still a long way from downtown Nisswa. Back to what I was saying, we have a small window of time where businesses make the majority of their profits in a year. We can't afford to have Main Street torn up during high season, make visitors navigate a construction zone, et cetera. We want to make sure we maintain the Mayberry small-town feel while making small but impactful updates to better the experience of all who spend time in Nisswa. That's all I have for you.
Thanks, Callie.
Yes, thank you.
Do any of the council members have any questions for Callie before I turn it over to any business owners or property owners that have additional input? Okay. Are there any, Callie, any business members or property owners here in the audience that would like to come up and share any thoughts, feedback, input, in addition to Callie?
Yeah, absolutely. I know that Emma from A and W wants to, so we'll start with her.
Okay, perfect. And if you can just state your name and the business, that would be great.
I got you. Good evening, Nisswa City Council members, Mayor Carnahan, city employees, and everyone in attendance tonight. My name is Emma Kruger, owner of the A and W Downtown Nisswa. First, we'll do some background. I purchased the A and W in two thousand and fifteen, and I'm entering my eleventh season as owner. I attended Nisswa Elementary. The A and W was my first job at thirteen, and my only employment in my life has been downtown Nisswa. I've worked every season since two thousand and three at the A and W, and in the winters, I was at the Nisswa Tax Service. When I became a mom to our son, I resigned from preparing tax returns to focus on his younger years. I work more in the summer than a lot of people do in an entire year. My husband, Matthew, our son and I live in between Nisswa and Baxter by Gull Lake and are building a home currently in Pequot Lakes. Matt has his career with the state of Minnesota. We are residents of this community all year round. My son attends Nisswa Elementary, and many of my current and former employees have attended Nisswa. Even when the restaurants closed, I'm still there, I'm still paying the bills, paying the taxes, doing upgrades, doing remodels, and the list goes on and on. Every day I come to work and I live and breathe Nisswa. My parents live a mile east of town. Nisswa is my whole life. We moved here when I was three from Minneapolis. I graduated from high school here, I attended college here, I'm Nisswa through and through. And while I love to travel, I always bring my experiences back to Nisswa and apply them to the Nisswa A and W and the events and the community events that I hold and plan and the partnerships that I participate in. Last October was the first mention I had heard of the downtown master plan situation, and it was brought to my attention through your survey, which was sent to us via the Nisswa Chamber. Upon visiting the website to take the survey, it was disheartening to see that W S N had omitted A and W as a landmark on the photo on the top of the survey site. The Nisswa A and W has been downtown since nineteen sixty-six, and to my knowledge and research, the oldest restaurant standing in downtown Nisswa. While we're not located on Main Street directly, we are still downtown Nisswa. You will all recall my email from October twenty-fifth addressing my concerns and hurt for not being included. I had immediate calls from council members Jesse Zahn, Joe Hall, and Bruce London, as well as an email from Jennifer Maxx and a call and email from Stephen Timblin. I also had various calls from community members and support from other downtown business members. Not one acknowledgement from then-mayor Ryan or council member Fraley. I appreciate the calls, emails, and support. A and W is a staple of this town. In the last fifty-nine years of A and W being in the downtown of Nisswa, we are in the minds of hundreds of thousands, if not millions of locals and tourists to Nisswa. In late October, I then sat through the city of Nisswa's listening session for us downtown business owners. I have great respect for the five original committee members of the downtown master plan committee. I support them all and thank them for representing us last fall. I, at that point, knew I could no longer stay the quiet, graceful businesswoman and needed to change to advocate for this town that I love so dearly and do so carrying forth my grace and businesswoman strength. I've been through a lot in eleven years, more than we have the time for tonight. Restaurant ownership and as a young female is not for the weak. I often will say that this is my first job to my last job as I imagine retiree doing this. However, there are days, such as the last few months, that truly make me question the future of Nisswa under the appointment of those guarding our city's future. We all came to the October meeting in shock at the many, many things that instantly were swirling and spreading around town. I am only acknowledging the facts and the three that concern me the most at this time. Number one, more has been spent on this survey thus far than many years we, as the small business owners in this town, are bringing home in income to our families in this community and spending directly back into this community. And the concepts that were given to the previous committee would only destroy the charm, the success, and the best small town in Minnesota. And in my opinion, to claim that these listening sessions were advertised is simply not acceptable. No one knew of them. Before this much money was ever spent, the public, the businesses, and the property holders should have had input and knowledge. You cannot change this much in a small town packed with small businesses and impact that many people's livelihoods without input and quality input. I understand this may be W S N's protocol, but we aren't redesigning an office building. It is infecting an entire town's future and those in its livelihood. Number two, now there is another eleven thousand six hundred paid to W S N due to their error in not listening to the business community and property ownership from the very beginning before it ever got to the point of concepts and plans. Number three, I sat in the audience on eleven nineteen for the special city council meeting regarding the downtown master plan to hear Mr. Reese with Wide Seth say that they took what the committee had, and in quote, "We put some concept ideas together. Let's get some high-level strategic thinking going about some of the ideas they heard about or were generated in the committee." No one on that prior downtown committee of five downtown business owners and/or property owners expressed or generated the three concepts that W S N presented, such as turning Main Street into a one-way, a walking path, adding food trucks and wagons in front of businesses. And now, as a current committee member, I would like to express that my personal thinking is not low-level or non-thought-out. I have lived here my entire life, and my entire life is dependent on Nisswa succeeding. My family depends on the income for our livelihood, as does my current twenty employees. Who would have a better idea of how to improve Nisswa and to do so strategically, as Mr. Reese stated, than the business and property owners of downtown Nisswa? It does not take a fancy job title to do so. And I joke with my husband, Matt, that he has the M S on his business cards for his master's degree, but that I should add a B F for Burger Flipper because I'm a darn good one and a smart businesswoman at that. I will conclude by saying that I thank you all for listening. Thank you all for now working with our downtown businesses and property owners on the master plan. Communication has greatly improved since the end of October, when all this came to the forefront, thanks to the Nisswa Chamber of Commerce. I hope and pray that this continues and that what we express on the committee is listened to and referenced as the master plan continues forward and that history is not repeated from when the committee gives their input and strategic thoughts to Wide Seth forming concepts. Nisswa is like no other. We want the charm, the memories, and the downtown to thrive for decades to come. We want our families and businesses to succeed for generations to come. And in my opinion, it cannot do so under the sheer failure of the city administrator to advocate for the future of the city of Nisswa. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Are there any other business owners, property owners, individuals that would like to address the council?
Mike French?
Oh, Mike, come up to the microphone.
That was an impressive talk, speech. Thank you. I have some concerns, not about exactly what's going on, but I wonder who is supposed to pay for it? Because there's a lot of people that don't live in downtown Nisswa, they're gonna get taxed for it. There are residents in Nisswa that never come into Nisswa, they're gonna get taxed for these improvements. I think that the city engineer can handle a lot of what's on there without anybody involved as far as crosswalks, access, wheelchairs. I don't know if there's a sidewalk ordinance in Nisswa. Most towns have one. I paid my way through college putting in sidewalks at Winona State, or down in Winona. When I was going to Winona State, they had an ordinance that allowed people to put in their own sidewalks. They just told everybody how to do it, the minimum requirements. They didn't, everybody was responsible for their frontage, their sidewalk frontage. It wasn't paid for by other taxpayers. They had to pay for what they owned. So that's just a concept bear in mind. As far as changing ADA compliance might be difficult with the west-side sidewalks in town without taking up road because there's no way to go through the building. So I'm not sure if the road width, what's more important? ADA compliance or road width for traffic control? I'm not sure if that's mandated and a necessity either, is it? Does anybody know?
The city of Nisswa just spent an additional twenty-five thousand dollars last year with Wood Seth to do a whole comprehensive plan on the ADA compliance for the entire city. So they looked at, I'm just making these numbers up, but a couple hundred different transitional sidewalk intersections that were identified in a whole separate plan that was only for the ADA and the sidewalks. Everything from taking out and removing sidewalks to simple grinding to changing pitch, slope, or water runs. And that was all done and conducted last year on a separate study. So the city already has all that information. Maybe answering a few more questions or information to put out for everyone in the room. Right now, in the city of Nisswa, throughout downtown, the proper surveying, and Tom could maybe help address some of these areas, but the proper surveying and street alignments and who actually owns like the city street, let alone even the sidewalks, has never been gone through and properly done at any time or any level from when the city started. You know, if we look right out front, in front of this building on City Hall Street, I know that that street is not properly mapped and plotted correctly. So to answer your question, throughout downtown, we now have this ADA compliance plan that the city paid for. But, you know, nobody in the city fully knows who owns what sidewalk where. Is it the business owner's responsibility? Is it the city's responsibility? Those are things that, you know, are a starting point for a plan like this, but to my knowledge, hasn't been discussed. And that was part of what I understood as a council person that would be discussed and gone over, as well as then a plan put in place, like the power, you know, some of these other concerns, you know, in town going through. Emma mentioned the area by the donut shop right there, right? Who actually owns that? Is that the actual city that owns it, or does somebody else own that strip right there? I couldn't tell you, and I'm not sure if anyone in the room right now could tell you. City in Nisswa owns it, yeah, without looking at a survey. But I see a lot of you business owners out here, you know what I'm talking about, the ones that have recently done building projects, you know, in the city or looked at this. It's, at the end of the day, it's just a mess. And so to answer all your questions, no, none of this work has been done. And I would think that would be one of the fundamental first steps that would need to be taken to be able to answer any of these questions, because without that, I don't know how we're gonna move forward without a plan. I don't know if all the council members know that information or whatnot.
I'm wondering what the practicality of it is and what its impact on Nisswa is. You know, when I look at it, I'd say, okay, it's gone on a lot of years without doing it. Is there a real push to do it now and why?
Yeah, so I think one of the pushes, you know, and I wouldn't say it's a push, but one of the things that we're looking ahead to do is because, you know, same with myself, I'm a lifelong member of this and knowing some of the frustrations that have gone on, not being involved on this side of the desk, but being involved on that side of the desk. Same thing, common sense hasn't always been applied to situations, you know. A few years ago, when downtown was tore up, at that time, the council decided not to do the curb and gutter and stormwater, you know. Tom can speak to all this. Currently, right now, where we're at, since the COVID and the current inflation on stuff, to repave a city street is just astronomical. It's gone up four times the cost of it was just a few years ago. And so to keep moving ahead with the growth of the town and all the changes, we have to have a plan. So people aren't beating their heads against the wall all the time when they want to come in and get a plan. So that when Tom is repaving the roads, we know that, hey, we currently own this sidewalk on this side of the street and we don't own this side. But now, hey, business owner, this is coming up in a year and a half. Do you want to update your sidewalk with us? You know, kind of what, you know, the sheet from the chamber's saying there, too. Do it all together and make it make sense. But without a plan, we as the city can't properly communicate to you all when this is gonna happen because for the first time, too, and like I say, Tom can speak here in a minute probably and jump in, but Tom has gone through the city and started to identify roads, timelines, and projects, which has never been done in the city before. Before, a road or a street or sidewalk would get fixed based upon the number of complaints that came in. And that's the way this town's operated. And it hasn't been until just recently that Tom's like, hey, let's actually put some logic to this and thought. So that's kind of from the city perspective that I'm not sure that anyone's shared at any of these meetings with any of your business owners that that's what's going on. Another thing is the power in downtown, Fourth of July. You know how many times we've lost power, or the transformer started on town on fire by Rafferty's Pizza just a couple of years ago? The number of you know the power issues, all overhead lines, you know. We've talked to Minnesota Power and Crowing about getting that underground. The time to do that would be the road projects, you know. So there's a lot of stuff that comes into play and maybe even more than I can talk about here tonight. And like I said, maybe Tom can help do that, but that is all missing information you all as business owners don't know or haven't been communicated. And so that's kind of why, you know, the how is yet to be determined because I agree with, you know, everything that Emma said, you know, the kickoff and where we got headed with this thing was in a hundred and eighty-degree different direction than where I thought it was going or where it should have gone to. And how that happened, I don't have an answer. I mean, that's part of the thing tonight for us is to ask those questions. You know, tonight I'm looking at it going, yeah, I agree, we spent fifty-seven thousand dollars. I need somebody in the room to show me what we've paid, you know, show me something tangible that we have for fifty-seven thousand dollars. I don't know what that is, and I'm on the council. And so that's one of my questions tonight. Somebody needs to show me what we have tangible because we're at just under fifty percent of the whole project. I don't know what we have for that dollar amount. So there's a lot of things to be discussed, but also, too, a lot of information to get back out there to the public that unless you know that it's talked about at a public works committee meeting, you know, some of this information there, some of it's talked at a city parks meeting, some of it's talked about here at the council. And without getting it all put together, yeah, I guess I don't know how everyone's gonna know. But I don't know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Tom, but do you have anything to say or add that could have kind of helped to why? Why we want to do this?
So I know the rollout of this wasn't perfect, but the whole idea behind the downtown master plan was to try to coordinate all these moving pieces, such as the park plan, issues with the street, ADA. And I think that was really the impetus for this thing beginning. And you know, it really gets messy. In part, you know, the survey work is way off. You know, so there's people who think they own sidewalks, who if the survey was corrected, may not. They probably don't even want to own them because there's quite a liability in owning a sidewalk. And the other thing with the sidewalks to remember, too, is if the drainage were done properly downtown, the collection structures are in the sidewalk. So as we move forward with this, there's gonna have to be a lot of discussions. Well, who wants to own the sidewalk? Who should own the sidewalk? And then what are the dimensions of it? And then, you know, if you allow every entity in the downtown to pick their own sidewalk, how do you coordinate that? Or, you know, if they take care of it themselves, how would you coordinate that? You want uniform- Or you know, if they take care of it themselves, how would you coordinate that? You you want uniformity and you also want some flow, you know, uh. It's like certain developments have, uh, you know, you can pick from certain houses, but you can't go outside of that. Cause you you don't want a shack and where million dollar house sits. And it's kind of the same thing with the downtown. Kind of addressing one of Mike's concerns about street width and if you had to make the sidewalks proper width, would you? Lose some of the street, you might, but the thing to know is depending on where you are in the downtown. There's probably uh, street width to give up, to build a proper sidewalk and. If they were put in properly, you might not even notice the, you, if anything, you probably noticed that the functionality of the street has improved. A lot of this stuff is hard to visualize for a lot of people. Um, when you see a two dimension plan, there's just a lot of folks who can't see that. We had the sit that issue when uh, the roundabout was constructed. Lot of people thought that project at that time would be the end of the downtown. If anything, that's been a boom to the downtown that brought that whole project when the new eighteen was built and. The roundabout was placed, uh, it's been a kind of an attraction point for the city. So we have quite a few good things there, there's that roundabout, there's the pocket park, the pocket park, as you know, needs. Some refinement, I would say, and some re-imagination, well, the downtown master plan was to address that too. I guess I I feel like I'm rambling a little bit, but um, there are a lot of issues, the the power, for instance, um. That's not a simple one. Um, my just preliminary discussions with Minnesota Power place. Just the transmission lines at a seven figure cost. That's not including the distribution throughout the downtown, it would probably double because. With our, excuse me, uh, Minnesota Power would only. Work with just their transmission line where they bring in, where they go from there to the individual businesses and. Structures such as a school would still have to be engineered by a private company. And built by a private contractor.
Six, seven dollars a foot for thirty four point five KV distribution too, it's nuts.
And so the only reason we asked the question of, well, how much should we try to anticipate, we're trying to get a ballpark, okay. Or, you know, if you would have asked a lot of folks probably before. I talked to Minnesota Power, you would have gotten an answer anywhere from high five figures, maybe six figures. Maybe a few might have guessed seven, but nobody knew. And so you can't even ask the question, should we pursue this? Should we spend some money on engineering? Well, I don't care what firm you use for engineering. People get paid for the work they do and it's a lot of work, it 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 doesn't always show up in a map. Like you have behind you, you know, there's a lot of hours that go into that, that you'll never see. And it's the same thing with power downtown, it's the same thing with sidewalks, it's the same thing with the street, drainage. Crosswalks, you know, everybody thinks, well, just paint a crosswalk across here. There's a liability to that, if you didn't plan it out properly, you could hurt someone. It has to be thought out and it has to be done, so, you know, uh, proper manner, so. Take some of this stuff with a grain of salt when you hear about it, and I know some of these numbers seem really large, uh, most folks are used to. What they would pay for, say their individual business or their individual home. Or what the city has to work with is usually much larger. And becomes much more expensive in part because there's a lot of opinions in. You know, we have to please a lot of folks and then you gotta get a compromise, so you know, it's not simple, like, you know, if, say you wanted to build a house. You know what you want, you can cut through a lot of the. Stuff to get to the fine points with the city is not that easy, we have to explore all the possibilities, even the ridiculous at times. And I think that's probably part of why you got some of these concepts early on, that people are going, whoa, whoa, this is nothing I wanted. Well, it maybe isn't, we can eliminate it, but it's a con, it's it's an idea. Did it cost you too much to get that idea? I don't know, that's for you to decide, but just some, just some things to think about.
Can you talk to your road, you know, how you've started scheduling the road projects versus just the ones that we're calling to complain?
Sure, so when I started here, the roads were just simply. You know, when the potholes got bad enough and the the switchboard light lit up enough here. That road would get prioritized, we would approach the engineer how much to repair this. They would put together a drawing, we'd hire a contractor, usually it's Anderson Brothers to come in and do the work. Um, so I started looking at how long of our roads existed, well. Some of them were approaching forty five years or more, if and hadn't been repaved in that amount of time. So we started off with just a simple structure, what if we repaved all the roads on forty year cycle, just to. Start to get some budget numbers together, try to grasp the concept. Um, forty years is too long for most streets, especially like if you're looking at Grandview. Uh, some of the downtown stuff forty years would be too much. It might be okay for some of the outlying areas, some of the less traveled streets, but it's too much in most cases, so. What we've done is we've moved to a thirty year cycle. So every street in the city, if. The powers that be decided to continue that, well, the roads will be repaved every thirty years. Um, the downtown uh, Main Street was done in twenty fifteen. So, you know, twenty forty five approximately is when you should expect that to be done, and so. Some of the things with the downtown master plan won't even be implemented for, you know, fifteen years or more. But it's easy, you know, if we can start talking about some of these ideas such as burying power lines now. You know, if there are better ways of doing it, other ideas, other contractors. Maybe that'll get flushed out in fifteen years, if we wait till the year of when we're gonna do the project, it's always too much money. You know, if you had to save a little bit, if you had to look for grants or whatever, it's not enough time to do it. As you've probably noticed a few who've been on the council, just to do our twenty twenty five road bond. Is, you know, it's pretty simple, it looks like it anyway, but you start digging into the details of it all. And next thing you know, three years has gone by and you haven't built a road yet. Well, when you get down to the downtown and some places where it's more complex, five years would not be enough time. So it's, it behooves us to, especially with some of the more um, critical areas of town, to look. Fifty years out, so a lot of what I'm doing now, I'm looking fifty years out, what's a city, what could it look like, what's the growth been? What, what is it probably gonna be for the next fifty years? It's not easy, you know, so one of the concepts you've heard about is city water, for instance. Every time that the issue has come up seriously, the city is always punted on. For instance, when they installed the city sewer to begin with in nineteen ninety one, before any of us were here, for the most part. They punted on it, they had the streets tore up, they did the bonding, they had all the meetings and they chose not to do it. Every major city around us, I should say major town, um, even Bacchus has a city water system. This one does not. Um, that might be okay for a while, but um, you know, with some of our more commercial areas especially. Uh, city water be very beneficial and it should be explored in a logical way, is it expensive? Oh, hell yeah. Very expensive, but it it definitely needs to be looked at seriously. And how could we implement it if we were going to and where would you?
We have that question, Hazard.
I hope so. So, anyway, um, I don't know if there's anything else I can answer for you or give you some insight on.
No, I mean, I think some of that information is probably helpful, you know, to, for people to know, um.
Thank you, do we have anyone else from the audience that would like to address the council related to the downtown master plan?
Hey guys, uh, Brandon Hedlin, right across the street over here, navigating North Real Estate, um, mine's pretty simple. On the top of every permit for anything pretty much you wanna do in the city, you need a survey, which is okay, right? Why was that not the base and the fundamental starting point and conversation before we ever brought it to a firm? For what we're trying to do, so that we know who owns what and where. You know, where the city streets are as opposed to the private streets and the private sidewalks versus the city sidewalks, I'm just. You know, I think about it from my perspective in real estate, like, that is numero uno to want to do anything, anywhere, you need a survey, so. It's just lost on me that we have money being thrown out at concepts without even knowing. Where we're heading with them or how we can head with them, I'm just, I'm very confused, it's a pretty open ended question, but I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
It was a topic of our conversation that. That we just had with.
One of my things I've brought up every time we've talked about this, you know, like you've heard me say. You know, right out here on City Hall Street. Hey, I used to join, I used to own the joining building, I owned all the way across the road to where Jeremiah sits out there. Yep, I mean, this has been a plan that plagued itself, you know. When this city hall building was built the last time, they didn't even survey that when they put this up there and. The edge of the parking lot was on my current property over there when I got my survey work. That was something back when um, um, Anderson was here from um, WSN. You know, I mean, why hasn't it been done? I don't know, I'm just on here, but same thing, it's just like, why? You know, in a lot of these towns, you know, um, the survey being numero uno hasn't been won. In how these towns develop, you know, go from a, you know, a. Horse trail to gravel road to a tar road and nobody has gone back through and and corrected it. Until they ne- needed to, but that's one of the things that I'm seeing right now. Yeah, I don't know how we can go ahead without addressing some of this, figuring it out, I mean, we heard from the uh. From the historical society down there, well, where's our property, you know, if if like a mini roundabout or something got put in that intersection. Or whatever that idea would be to help fix the traffic flow there, what do we even own? I I don't know, but yeah, that would be also, that's one of my questions here tonight too, like. I have not, I knew that this was gonna happen and until I heard from, you know. The people that got put on the um, on the committee, I guess, till committee members start calling. Going, what in the heck's going on? I'm like, I don't know, it's not, it's not what I thought or understood either to be happening, so. At some point, there's been a huge disconnect. Somewhere between these conversations because also too, like Emma said, you know, when she was at the committee. They gave these ideas and then what was drawn, what wasn't spoke about, I know Tom, uh, Bob Johnson's not here tonight too, but we got all the emails from him. I spoke to him several times and he's going, I sat in every one of these meetings and. We're talking English and somebody's hearing French over here, there's something going on and that's, I think, part of this meeting to figure out. Yeah, what's going on, you know, cause I think all the business owners, what your guys' list has come up with. I don't know Jenny, if you can pull up the original list, you had it when, when we had the meeting here again from the staff. Even from the staff in the city had an or- original list of what they would like to see done with downtown. And I'm just like, I I don't know how, I don't know how we got so far off. I, that's one question too that I need answered from this side of the desk tonight. How did we get so far off on this and like I've already said, what do we tangibly have the show for fifty seven thousand dollars? Cause I think that's what everyone out there is wondering too, you know, so, I don't, so I don't know. I guess that's the best answer if anyone else has an answer.
I think Brandon to answer a point. To your question as to why, there's a lot of whys, there's a lot of whys that we ask when we get elected and we get placed in the seat and we're. We're learning, we're absorbing information, we're trying to understand what was the rhyme and reason twenty, thirty, forty years ago? That led us to this situation today. This town was a township, smiley township, it was that horse trail that had a railroad go through it. This, this place has beyond old history to it when it comes to the plotting of it. And if you look at it today, there's gonna be businesses that have their actual building in the center of their plot, it's not accurate and. I think it's. Looking at a, at the big picture thirty thousand foot view, there's a lot of layers to the onion. And we're peeling things back and we're discovering that there's different ways to rearrange it, to attack it. There's nothing, this is not a golden handbook for how things are gonna be executed in the city. You're not looking at five individuals that are mandating that we're gonna be shovel ready in three months and get ready for it and deal with it. We're not those kind of people, we're your neighbors, we're your friends, some family. But we're also your customers downtown as well, I go to A and W and get that uh, delicious diet A and W, root beer float. It's better, that's a trick, that's a lot, long time uh, insider secret, but. We're all vested too, there's no immediate rush and if Tom's points. Do ring true, you won't see Main Street opened up for another two decades from this year. And if we're gonna be going those routes of trying to beautify Nisswa and being able to utilize what conversations sparked up with. Even before Stephen with Bethany Sodderland, what would happen if we ever had Main Street ripped up, for whatever reason? What could we accomplish? That snowballed into a wide open discussion of being able to try to tackle not just one, but ten things. You plan for, you budget for, you account for, public input. I I don't think we're ever gonna get this right, we're never gonna make more than fifty one percent of you in the room happy. But we're trying to and it's a collective feed feedback and input that's gonna help driving forward on this. Plan right now. There's a a piece of this where there's a council motion where we need to come forward with some suggested input in action. I think. Dave, I think that there's been some questions asked in regards to WSN and Jenny, apologies if we're gonna be going out and Jennifer, for going off. Kilter here, but I think it's all relevant nonetheless, there's some answers that wanna be heard, what, what has been accounted to date? In regards to the spend for WSN, explain the eleven thousand, I believe it was a change order and out of scope work addition. What do we have still that is under contract within those, that dollar spend that? Is is there rework as we discussed, I believe it was the October meeting, are there revisions that can be made for that spend or is there additional spend for every? Uh, revision to any specific plan and. Again, this isn't something I don't think that we're expecting to have a shovel ready project in three months, once the ground thaws, no. This could be something four years, eight years, twelve years out, that's just the nature of a municipal. You all understand the dollars of the budget that this city has and it's smaller than every nearby surrounding town. And yes, sir, tax dollars do get uh, appropriated to specific projects in town, that's how the tax base works. But we have to manage that accordingly, so we don't abuse that, and I understand the, the response from, from. The WSN spend, city does not have a dedicated city engineer. That's a WSN employee you're seeing up here, that says city engineer, same thing with the city attorney, that sits right next to him. Our staff is small, Stephen's a department of one in planning and zoning, Tom's got his own department as well for managing the sewer and the rest of the city public works. And go, go on and on, so again, as we're peeling that proverbial onion back and Brandon to answer your question. Why? We, we're right alongside you and it's not that Jenny is supposed to know the answer or any other department head. The city's been around longer than all, than any of us have been alive, so we're still going through and trying to formulate the best plan forward. And it just takes time, it just does, and most of us have four year terms or two year terms, so. You may not be looking at the same face by the time this thing shovel ready, right? But you still may own that business. We'll still be here as residents, so it's a complicated beast and hopefully that sheds a little different light on my perspective of it.
Ri- real quick, just something else to add, you know, we're talking, you know, it might be a decade or so. I'm gonna be willing to bet though that it'll be quicker than that because also too. Um, I'll say that there's a little shift or change, a lot of you out there have come into the city and said, hey, I wanna do this, I wanna build this, I wanna change this. And for the most part, the answer's been no, you can't do this, you can't. The building's too high, it's too big, it's not painted brown, it's whatever, and the answer's been no, 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 no. And there is a shift changing, we're not gonna be Baxter, but we are um, working on updating. With Stephen, the uh, the rules, the regulations, um, honestly. Trying to get rid of some of this nonsense stuff that has hindered some business and some growth in this town, I mean, if you look at Nisswa and what's changed. Then you go over to Crosby and look at what they're doing over there, you know, we're, we're light years behind. And so also too, is some of the ordinances and stuff may change to allow businesses. Businesses or some other little development or stuff come in. We don't know when the next person's gonna walk in and say, hey, we bought. Half of downtown or. This section of land and we're gonna do this development now that would drive this change quicker. Power, road, something get tore up that none of us in this room can predict. And. My guess is that's gonna happen quicker than twenty years. So I'll just, that's another reason for it because. Um, some of those changes are coming in a positive manner for the town.
Yeah, I think this is good discussion and great feedback, uh, especially from the chamber and the business owners. I own two businesses myself in downtown Nisswa. So I have a vested stake in the town as well. I think we're at a path here where there's two directions that. The council could consider going and one is we could just halt this project. Right here and now because it sounds like there is not clarity from even folks who have been on this council. Um, longer than me, which is not a month yet, um, with, with how things transpired. Um, or the council could consider. Re-initiating the project and based on everything that I've heard tonight with a very reduced. Scope of the project, streamlining that, right? Less is more. It sounds like we don't have to do this whole pie in the sky. Re-envision and imagine downtown in its entirety, but just stick to the things that are core and necessary. Um, around safety, crosswalks, right? Key infrastructure improvements, thoughtful parking solutions. And really taking a look at the budget. The council had previously approved a one hundred and twenty thousand. Dollar budget and I think, what is it? Fifty seven thousand has been spent so far. Is there a way if the council were to choose to move forward with re-engaging the project? To talk to Woodseth and see, hey, because people feel that the work that has been done has not been within the scope. Is Woodseth willing to work with the city with the money that's already been spent on a re. You know, envision scope of the project and to go from there instead of saying, hey, the budget was one twenty, we've only spent fifty seven. We still have sixty grand left. I'd like to see the city personally save as much of that money as possible. Um, based on all the feedback too, but council member Fraley and. London, you haven't had a chance to chime in yet, so.
That uh, gotta take a better look at it, see that we didn't get what we paid for. And uh, try to figure out what kind of damage control we can do to get it straight around.
I'm just gonna. Like Joe said, I think Jesse touched on it too. When it started, we were looking at safety, security, ADA compliance. Realigning some roads and then it just went, boom. I was kinda surprised too. You're not picking me up? But anyway, I was kinda surprised too when Joe showed me the concept drawings. I hadn't seen him. I'm like, well, one, one, I'm like, well, that's a concept, but two. I didn't even think, I didn't think we were anywhere near ready for that. The other thing too is I, I do believe we need to have. Downtown area surveyed so that we. Know exactly what the city owns, what the city doesn't own. I mean, it, it's a mess, you know? Some people might be happy, some people may not. Our neighbors weren't happy. When we had to have our property re-surveyed and they found out they lost thirty feet. Plan, you know, because of when the surveys were done, who looks at what and that and that. I'm all for a slowing down. Of this. Um, I agree with the mayor on. Working with Woodseth, see if we can. We spent this. Let's look at what's going on, but I, I, I'm all for a slowing down right now. And to say, okay, one, I, I don't think we should proceed until we have a survey done. You know, and take care of the things that we need. Um, one of the things we do have to look at is pocket park with the runoff. So that's one of the issues we have to look at shortly, sooner rather than later. That's all I have.
Is the council prepared or in a position to make a motion around the downtown master plan at this point in time at this special council meeting?
I guess, you know, for me, you know, I don't know, maybe, you know, somebody from Woodseth or Jenny. I just need brought up the speed. Us as the council. We thought one thing was gonna happen. And it obviously didn't. And so I need to know where the disconnect is before we go ahead. So. Um, the communication, it's not. That it happened, it did happen. I'm, I'm trying to figure out why, because if we move ahead, we can't just keep going in this manner. But then also too. I, I don't know if we've had one meeting or thirty meetings. I, I don't, I don't know any of this information. So. All I know is on this sheet, it says we spent fifty seven thousand dollars. And again, my question is. Show me, show me something. That we have for this fifty seven thousand dollars.
Sure, if I can, Mayor Carnahan. And um, I might. Look to Dave for a little bit um, from their internal process perspective, cause I don't have that lens, but I can. Try to speak to um, maybe just some overall concepts and things. I think it's a. Fair statement as we've talked about tonight to, to say that these are very complex issues. And there are multiple things coming together at one time, um, which then tends to. You know, cost frustration or um, sometimes the unknown. This started off in October of twenty twenty-three with that sort of initial. Introduction of this idea from city staff, council remembers that. It kind of speaks to some of those baseline questions regarding infrastructure and some of those things. Um, and as I talked about at that business uh, listening session, um, there were a handful of meetings that transpired between that. October twenty-three and March of twenty-four that resulted in this R F P. And candidly, this came to the council for approval. I just, I just did a search on this document to the question specifically about that um. Right of way acquisition, surveying work, things like that. And that's not referenced in the R F P. So probably all the way around, maybe that was a missed. Component. But we, we all need to just say that's, that was a missed component. Let's acknowledge that and figure out where in this process we wanna interject that. And maybe what specific areas have higher priority to say, let's survey that or let's work through that right of way. So this was in front of the council and so I, I'm struggling a little bit with. There weren't questions about this at the time. Now, I don't know about Woodseth.
Let's just hold up right there. Where in that R F P, does it say that we're gonna get. Compre, you know, kind of um. Futuristic plans drawn up of taking out Main Street and putting in all grass and sidewalks. I mean. I'll just be candid. At the end of the day, we spent fifty seven thousand dollars. We've pissed off more than ninety percent of the business owners and business community in the town to the point where in this very. Chamber, we had to haul in more chairs to seat all the business owners in here. And, and that's what we need an answer to. So we can read the R F P. And say, okay, the surveying was one missed thing. But. We're not even on the same boat. We, we completely missed the boat. So there's the survey there, but. We're, we're way over here in left field. I mean, how did, how did we get so. Dreamy and visionary over here, especially when the people are sitting right out here that were in that meeting. With, with this and they said, these weren't the ideas that were presented. So something happened. Between the meeting and the visionary and I, none of us were here. So that's why. We've heard from one group and they're all sitting here saying, and I've talked to him individually, sitting here saying. That's not what we talked about. It's not what we discussed. What's going on? I mean, you know, same thing. Mark just, I gave him the plans and he had no idea. So how? One thing, but there's, there's a huge communication issue here that needs to be addressed.
The way I would say that is we had, and, and Dave helped me out here. Um, we had that meeting, those conversations, these concepts presented. The collective response from the committee was, this did not hit the mark and, and we, we want to be able to, to step back. And talk about more individual concepts and really dial that back. That was acknowledged. We all were in agreement of that. We never had the opportunity to come back and say, how do we reset? That, that was never afforded to that group or to Woodseth. So here we are still a few months later and we're happy to do that or adjust as needed. But that truly was just. Those weren't the concepts that the committee wanted to see that we felt were appropriate for the community. We relayed that.
The committee just said that they didn't wanna see those. Emma just, just stated that, that those were not concepts that the committee talked about.
So I can't answer that. Maybe you can speak to that.
So taking a look at uh, the work plan that we submitted based on the R F P. Um, we were working our way through that work plan. Um, working with the development of the committee to get input on. A, a variety of issues. I think it's been explained tonight very well, how complex. Community planning can be. Um, when you cross all of the specific topics from transportation to pedestrians. On continuity, drainage, streets, all of that. Were we at the deliverable stage of submitting something? Uh, to the community. I think we were at the stage of the work plan. Of what do you like, what you, what do you don't like? Stage and to get that pictorially on a drawing so that. You know, the concepts are fully being understood and can be talked about. Exclude what? The direction that we don't want to go in. Um, maybe there's some ideas uh, that we do. Um, that's the stage we were at, okay? Along with a lot of other groundwork. Things that. You know, you can't pick up and look at necessarily. We could provide that to you, all of the steps that have been taken to date, all the time. That's been spent, um, including. A lot of survey of the downtown, but not from the standpoint of. Defining where property lines lie. And again, that wasn't part of the R F P that the city sent out. To all the consultants that it solicited from. So you didn't get that from anyone. To begin with. Um, can that be done? Absolutely. We could provide that to you uh, if you request it. So usually that level of survey is done after you've taken a look at. Uh, the planning process and talked about some of the things that. Define the direction you're going in. Things that you wanna exclude, things that you do want to include. And you get to um, the nitty gritty of doing a survey like that so that you get to the design. You, you get a deliverable, then you get a plan. And that's ultimately where the master planning ends when. We've had lots and lots of input. Throughout the whole process, a lot of defining and refining throughout the process. Um, not excluding anyone. Including business owners, residents, visitors. Uh, customers. Uh, we want input from everyone. To get to that point. But that point is uh, where you would actually get something. In your hands. That you take forward and implement with projects. Um, something that's thoroughly thought through so that we don't have to come back. Fifteen, twenty years from now and redo. Because we didn't think about drainage when we thought about beautification. Now we have to redo. So that's kind of the concept stage that we were at in the process. Do we have a plan to give you that's final for the? Time and effort, money that's been spent, not right now. But we can sure show you effort that's gone into it. And we're open to redefining scope if that's what you'd like to do. Um, certainly open to that.
Yeah, thank you. I, I feel like we need to reset because it seems that. Not every member of the council has the full information or feel like they have all the information or the background or the process that was in place. We have a council retreat coming up on February twenty-fifth. You know, could this be a topic at our retreat that we all discuss? More in length before we come back and make a motion on how this moves forward and redefining that scope and putting that pressure. On everyone tonight, right? It sounds like. We need to do some more information gathering, Dave, to what you talked about of all the work that Woodseth has done on there and. I don't think there is transparency about that to all the council right now. Tied in a line to the budget, understanding. Hey, can we just press pause on this one hundred and twenty thousand? Like, let's not spend another penny. On this yet until we all have more information. And then give everyone on this council the time and to think through. You know, if you were going to re-scope this project now after listening to our business community over three meetings and maybe talking to folks outside of. The council meeting. What would be your thoughts and suggestions? And then is there a way we can come together and have more robust discussion on that? Perhaps at our, like I said, our, our February twenty-fifth retreat. Or maybe, you know, we have the February council meeting, but can we gather all that information in between now and then? That's over a month. And Jenny, could you work with folks to pull all of that together and make sure that everyone feels fully comfortable? With all of the information on the table, everything that's been done to date so that everyone can make an educated, informed decision. Recommendation going forward in conjunction with everything that's been presented by our business community. Any thoughts on that?
I think it's a no brainer route to go. I mean, we don't wanna kill any momentum. Good efforts on, on your and Cali with the rest of the business owners to be able to get a collective input, but. As I'm sitting up here thinking to myself of a, of a project that could easily blossom into something that's. More than a seven figure project. And I think we gave two very realistic scenarios that could make that number go far more north than that. We had a, Amber, we had a Galway Trail Steering Committee. For a project that was so infant, it was probably on a barnapkin somewhere. Roger, Roger Landers is probably watching right now laughing cause I. Might be right, but we, we took that idea, they took that idea, how many years ago? Four, five? No, the bike trail. Got it. That committee had stayed together through multiple election cycles and was determined. To stay committed on a monthly meeting. They met here, they elected a chair or they nominated a chair. There was a liaison from the city council. I think in working in tandem on the back half of your plan after we have the retreat, we could probably try to discuss. This idea there in regards to maintaining some momentum. So there are discussions because again. It will help bring more value with more insight just due to the sensitivity of it. It's an initial thought I have to piggyback up of yours, but yes, I agree.
Yeah, for sure. Because what Dave just explained and what I'm reading and read in the R F P, it still does. Just doesn't align to me for what I thought that this document was saying that we were gonna get versus the initial steps that were taken in. And kind of where we went right off the get go. And so I think maybe some more. Guidance from us or steps put in place, but then also too, um. I don't know, I think it needs a liaison assigned to it. From the council at least getting going because, you know, as a council person, all of a sudden the phone and the emails blowing up. After a meeting out there with the community and everybody that's on the committee going, hey, what's going on? And myself as a council member saying, you know, I don't got any idea. It's not a, it's not a good spot for us to be in either. So I, I would also say that, that would be. It's not a, it's not a good spot for us to be in either. So I, I would also say that that would be something that we wanna.
Do one moving forward to, what is the date of the meeting? Retreat is on the twenty-fifth? So our next. Our next regular council meeting will be third week of March.
The eighteenth. We have a council meeting, February eighteenth.
Council meeting after the retreat will be in March.
So the day of the retreat and the meeting, maybe we could schedule a specific time to invite the committee. That's put together to be a part of that with us. So it's not, you know, so you all can be there with us. On the front end.
Sounds good. Do, we don't need a formal motion on that, do we Jenny? Sounds like everyone's in alignment. Okay, um, does anyone have anything else related to the downtown master plan? Otherwise, um, we. Could accept a motion to adjourn.
Tim's got something.
Tim Wagner, I own up north bike rentals next door. I'm also live here in town over on Hazelwood Drive. Um, I was on the original committee, uh, of five business owners and people from downtown. Um, I'm also a part of the. New committee that has been formed. And I just did just wanna share that, you know, during our first committee of five people, I felt like there were a lot of really good ideas. That came out of that and I don't want all that to get lost. I think one thing that went wrong with the first committee is we, we came to one of our monthly meetings. And we were handed some drawings with three different options and, you know, I think those were a good starting point, but. I think a lot of people felt like, well, these are our options. Pick one, one, two or three. And I don't think there was really anything in there that everybody really liked. I do feel like it was a starting point though. Um, so I don't really know that we should scrap everything that we've done. I don't really know that any of the concepts are anything that anybody wants, but. There probably are some good points in there that we can maybe build off of. So, you know, I. With the money that's been spent, I, I can't speak to that, but I do feel like we could maybe revisit. Some of that as we move forward and say, well, okay, overall, yeah, ninety percent of this maybe doesn't work, but. This idea here we can maybe utilize or this over here, things like that. So I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Yeah, and that's how we went through the parks. I mean, Amber can say that we, the company came in, Parks Master Plan, they had. Three concept drawings. We brought them around to the public, open houses and so forth. Uh, people were looking, they like this, they don't like that, blah, blah. So, and that's what the concepts are. You have three concepts. You take what the people like and you come together with one. And that's what we had to do. It's a long process. It's still in the works, but. This concepts are, yes, it was just kinda like, wow, concepts right now. Okay. I didn't know if the committee called for them. What? I, I'm staying out of that one. But yeah. Tim is, that's the correct way to do it. Look at the concepts, see this works, that doesn't work. We'll put these all together, but we're, we're, we're gonna re-assess, restart. Reset. I'll make a motion to adjourn if there's.
All right, a motion to adjourn is not debatable. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.